It is six o'clock and I would like to call this meeting to order if you would stand and join us for the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk Preston, if you'd call the roll, please.
Chris McCoskey.
Here.
Terry Lautner.
Here.
Jeff Shaw.
Here.
Jim O'Rourke.
Here.
Dave Darga.
Here.
Connie Preston here.
Thank you. Item four, declaration of conflict of interest. If any board member has any perceived conflict of interest with any agenda item in this evening, please declare that now. Okay, seeing none. It is six oh one and I would like to open the budget public hearing. At this time, if anyone has any comments that they would like to make regarding the budget. Seeing none, it is still six oh one and I'd like to close budget public hearing. Thank you. Item six, public comment. It is six oh two, I'd like to open public comment. If anyone here would like to make any comment this evening, you have three minutes. If you direct your comments directly to the board. All right. Moving right along. It's six oh two, I'd like to close public comment. Item seven, consensus agenda, consent agenda, that. Purpose of the consent calendar. Let me try that again. Consent calendar. The purpose of the consent calendar is to expedite business by grouping non-controversial items together to be dealt with in one board motion without discussion. Any member of the public, board, or staff may ask that any item of the consent calendar be removed and placed elsewhere on the agenda for full discussion. This evening, we have department reports from the treasure, planning, zoning, fire. No committee reports. We have minutes from the eleven fourteen twenty-two meeting as well as the eleven twenty-one twenty-two budget work session. We have post audit invoices, date eleven seventeen through twenty-two through twelve one twenty-two, and we have our twenty twenty-three meeting schedule. Would any board member like anything removed and placed elsewhere?
Motion to approve is submitted.
Okay, let me see if anybody in the public or staff. None? Okay, we have a motion. And support. Any discussion? Okay. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Agenda approval. Anybody want to add anything to the agenda?
I think we'll add new business under eleven I resignation of a trustee.
Okay. Okay. So that's eleven I resignation letter. Any other modifications to the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda as amended by adding eleven I resignation of trustee.
We have a motion and support. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Reports and presentations. You have your supervisors report. My remarks, rookie, you will be immensely missed here. So on behalf of everybody in Anelmwood Township, thank you for everything you've done the last few years and years and years before. So we will miss you a lot. The other thing I will say is that I did have a discussion. I've been emailing back and forth a little bit with the land bank and our project at Brewery Creek potentially will fit with the requirements. So we're going to go ahead and try to get a grant to help us fix that blighted parking lot. So could be a pretty substantial amount. So so we're working toward that. Other trustee remarks. Anybody?
My only remark is O'Rourke can still come to the meeting and report on what's happening.
Mr.
Yes, sir, I plan on that. Thank you.
Engineers report. You guys have a written engineers report. Any questions that you have on that, if you want to ask me, or I can pass them along. Okay. Other officers remark. Chief, do you have anything for us? Okay. Harbor master is not here. Communications from the clerk.
I'll just add my thanks to Rookie for all his work over the years and I'll really miss working with him.
You guys are going to make me blush, okay?
Item ten, old business. There is none. Eleven, A, Board of Review Marina Committee appointments. We have three appointments or a couple of appointments. One appointment or a couple of reappointments, I guess. So you can see them listed there. Don Gallagher would like to serve on the Board of Review. Most of you guys know Don. And Bob Solkunicki, Board of Review. He's, his time is up and Ken Klein, Richard on Marina Committee, so.
Motion approved. All three is submitted.
Four. We have a motion and support. And any discussion?
It's nice to have Mr. Solkunicki on that and Mr. Gallagher. Miss, Mr. Solkunicki, I was on the board with him years. He's an attorney. He's just really fair, really, you know, we are lucky to have him.
Yeah, he does a really good job. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Twenty twenty-three budget resolution. Item eleven B. That's what we just had the hearing on.
Yes, it is. Resolution fourteen. I move we approve resolution fourteen of twenty twenty-two.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please, Connie.
I'll vote yes. Dave Darga?
Yes.
Jim O'Rourke?
Yes.
Terry Lautner?
Yes.
Chris McCoskey?
Yes.
Jeff Shaw?
Yes. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Salary resolutions. I know we need to do these one at a time. So the first one, resolution establishing salary of the township supervisor.
I'll move to adopt resolution establishing salary of the township supervisor. That's resolution fifteen of twenty twenty-two and the salary is in the amount of fifty-three thousand twenty dollars annually.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion and support. Discussion? Roll call, please, Connie.
Chris McCoskey?
Yes.
Terry Lautner?
Yes.
Jim O'Rourke?
Yes.
Dave Darga?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. And Jeff Shaw?
Yes. Thank you. Resolution establishing salary of the township clerk.
I move we approve resolution sixteen of twenty twenty-two establishing clerk's salary at fifty-three thousand two hundred dollars annually.
Support.
Motion and support. Discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Jim O'Rourke?
Yes.
Dave Darga?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. Terry Lautner?
Yes.
And Chris McCoskey?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes, too.
Oh.
Okay.
You're welcome.
I was putting you down for that.
Resolution establishing salary of the township treasurer?
Motion to approve resolution seventeen of twenty twenty-two in the amount of fifty-three thousand two hundred dollars.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion and support. Discussion?
Do we need to fix the?
Yeah. It's fifty-three thousand twenty dollars.
Underpaid, yeah, fifty-two thousand two hundred.
Well, I think it's just on county lines.
Yeah.
Yeah. Two dollars, fifty-three is two dollars. That's, why is that, why is that zero there? All right.
Okay. Any other discussion?
You need a raise.
Yes, Terry supported.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
Terry Lautner?
Yes.
Chris McCoskey?
Yes.
Jim O'Rourke?
Yes.
Dave Darga?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. And Jeff Shaw?
Yes. Thank you. And resolution establishing compensation of the township trustees?
I'll move to adopt resolution eighteen of twenty-two establishing the compensation of the township trustees at three thousand seven hundred seventy-five dollars annually with a one hundred dollar per special meeting.
Support.
Motion and support. Discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Chris McCoskey?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. Terry Lautner?
Yes.
Dave Darga?
Yes.
Jim O'Rourke?
Yes.
And Jeff Shaw?
Yes. Thank you. Item eleven D, capital improvement plan. Sarah, if you would join us.
Okay, so in your packet, you're going to see a draft capital improvement plan. So this has gone for introduction as well as public hearing as required before the planning commission. So, you know, I do have a memo kind of like displaying the steps of a capital improvement plan. Essentially, the township does need to have one every year. Standard according to the Michigan Planning Enabling Act. So what I did is, you know, I reached out to our department heads and it, I asked for a list of all capital improvements expected in the next few years, seven years, that are going to exceed ten thousand. So they are, you know, included year by year. So, you know, if you approve of the draft plan, I do have a proposed motion for you. If you have any questions, I'm also happy to answer those to the best of my ability because again, the, the amounts were included from our fire chief as well as our harbor master.
Did we add that whole building down or did we add?
Did we add the improvements to the old fire hall in there, the?
The damage, water?
The water damage to the ceiling. I don't, I didn't, I don't know that we thought that was going to exceed ten.
I don't think we ever got a.
That's, that's not in here.
Okay.
We budgeted for it.
Oh, we did budget for it. That's right.
Yep.
Okay, that's right.
For twenty-three.
Yep, yep, yep. Okay.
I'll make a motion. We approve the capital charter township of Anelmwood Capital Improvement Plan for twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-nine.
Support.
Have a motion and support. Any other discussion? I know that was a lot of work just putting it together, so, thank you. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you, sir. Thanks, you guys. And eleven E, Spark Grant Application Marina Improvements.
Yep, so again, memo kind of explaining it. We're trying to get some additional funding. You know, it's limited funds, but any opportunity that we can get to get funds to help, you know, us proceed with our Marina project, you know, we'll, we'll for sure submit those applications. A requirement for the Spark Grant is there needs to be a township board resolution. So, you know, I did draft that and, you know, it's for your approval.
So what is a Spark Grant?
It's essentially funding from the state to help communities that have been impacted by COVID to use for, you know, parks and recreation. So there's funding for twenty twenty-three and they're going to be releasing three phases of it. So for the first phase, I believe it's twenty-five, twenty-five mil. And, you know, it'll be fifteen mil. Essentially, you know, again, for parks improvement for communities who have been impacted by COVID.
And I think there's seventy million in all or something?
Yeah.
Something like that.
I realize I forgot the fund, so.
Yeah. Yep.
I don't know if we'll get it. I mean, again, everybody that I know is applying, so we can, we can always resubmit the application for the other two phases of funding.
Right. And it's, there's going to be a lot of competition for it and, you know, a part of, a part of the scoring is disadvantaged communities and that kind of stuff. So, I mean, you know, there's going to be a lot of competition, but Michael Jordan said, you miss all the shots you don't take, so.
Yes, sir.
You know, it's worth us applying and, and as Sarah said, we can, we can reapply for the next two phases, for the next two grant cycles. So we thought it'd be good to try for it.
Just did our parks and recreation update plan and that would
Yep.
real good for it.
Yep.
Motion to approve resolution nineteen of twenty-two.
Support.
Motion and support. Any other discussion about it? Okay, roll call, please, Connie.
Chris McCoskey?
Yes.
Terry Lautner?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. Dave Darga?
Yes.
Jim O'Rourke?
Yes.
And Jeff Shaw?
Yes. Thank you, Sarah. Thank you. And Grant Application Guidelines? Glad we lumped that all together so you can just stay up there.
Yes, thank you Connie for doing that. Anyway, so the memo kind of explains it all. When the Michigan Sparks Grant, when we, you know, became aware of it, there was some internal discussion on whether or not the staff had the authority to pursue any and all, you know, grant applications. You know, to just kind of solidify that, yes, staff does have the authority to do it. I do propose, you know, either one, well, one of two motions. The first one is to kind of all encompassing, so we can pursue grant funding for all projects included in any township board approved plan. And also at the discretion of like staff and our, obviously, discussion with our supervisor. And then the other one, if you would feel comfortable, more comfortable with just pursuing grant funding for projects identified in approved township plans, that's the second motion.
You know, sometimes we get things that kind of drop in our lap that we don't have a lot of time to prepare for, you know, the grant opportunities that just kind of come along. So it'd be nice if Sarah, you know, if we can apply for those rather than try to pull a special meeting together or something if we don't have time to, you know, like the Spark Grant is due.
Next week.
Yeah.
So the motion one is more?
More all encompassing.
Yes. I think we should go on motion one.
And, and clearly, you know, that doesn't change the, the backend of
No.
Grants. So if we do get, if we do get offered that grant, the board still has to approve it. It just gives us the opportunity to go after them in a short time. So it's not like we're going to get, take those grants without the board's approval. It just gives us the opportunity to apply for them. And then if we're awarded those grants, the board still has to approve it. So.
How many different people would be applying for grants or is it only one?
Typically, we run it through our planning zoning. I mean, we always have.
Just so there's not multiple people
Yeah.
applying for
Right.
things that
Yeah.
may be overlapping.
Yeah. And, and we're, I think we're very cognizant of that in the, in the office that, you know, if, if there's a grant opportunity that comes along, we all talk about it and, you know, what's the best way?
As long as there's a discussion, I think that's fine.
Okay.
Better move the ball forward.
Yeah.
I'll make the motion to allow township employees to pursue grant applications for projects including but not limited to projects identified within plans adopted by the township board.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, sir. Schedule special meeting, trustee interviews and appointments.
Deadline's the fifteenth, so.
Fifteenth of what?
This month.
December.
This month, the deadline is for the
Oh, for the applications?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
Have we got any yet?
We have three. So first off, I guess we would just interview all three. It's not like we have twenty and we're going to have a meeting and narrow it down to who we want to interview, I think, if anyone, you know, agrees.
I'd say if we have less than, at least less than five or less.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay. I think that would be good. So first of all, are we going to do an evening? Is that, I guess that's best for most applicants. And how about us or what? What do we want to do on that?
Well, fifteenth to cut off twenty-sixth day after Christmas, not good. Twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, maybe?
Can we get copies of the ones that we already have?
Yeah, I can, I'll scan them and email them to you on the sixteenth or at the end of the day on the fifteenth. So you can look them over.
Do we want to do it sooner? Do we want to do it before Christmas? Going to try to get it done?
Might be better.
Okay.
Better for my schedule if we could do like think, well, the twentieth is a special planning commission meeting.
Right.
Twenty-first, maybe?
Hmm.
Can we do it during the day?
I could on the nineteenth or the twentieth during the day.
Can't do it on the nineteenth.
Okay.
And that's if the applicants are available.
Nineteenth is a, a week from today. Can we?
Terry said nineteenth, doesn't work for him.
Twentieth doesn't work for me.
Okay, twenty-first?
Not during the day.
Okay. Evening of the twenty-first, is that, do we want to do an evening? Wednesday evening?
Well, why not? I mean, we got, how long, how long we figured it, talk to them? Five minutes? Ten minutes?
Oh, I would think it, we might want to plan for twenty. I mean.
Twenty on each candidate?
Well, what was, for treasure, would you say it was about that long?
Probably seemed like an hour.
Yeah. Like forever, but maybe fifteen. Ten, fifteen minutes.
That was treasure, you know, that's a high-profile position.
Sure. You know, actually, I
Trustee.
If we have five candidates, we take an hour on each of them. We don't want, half an hour on each of them, we don't want.
Either Wednesday or Thursday, either one.
Thursday during the day would work for me.
Thursday during the day?
The twenty-second?
Twenty-second?
Yeah, the twenty-second.
Yeah. No way we can.
That worked, you think, Terry?
Yeah, what time during the day?
What's best for you, Terry?
On noon.
Sounds good.
Noon to two thirty?
I, if I'm telling you in a form, I may have a jury trial that day unless it's canceled, so, but that's all right.
Noon to two thirty sounds good.
Okay.
Okay. And that's Thursday, the twenty-second?
Twenty-second.
So we'll see if our candidates can make it for that, too.
Yeah.
Noon to two thirty, right?
Yep.
What's the date?
Twenty-second.
I'll just post it for noon.
Sounds good.
Okay.
So is it going to be kind of organized or is everybody? Well, it's open meeting, so.
It's open meeting, but I would think we would ask them to wait their turn.
I would think the, you'd want to sit and watch the other people through there so you could see how you
But if they want to be appointed, they'll probably be more cooperative than us. I mean, if we just ask nicely.
Oh, man. Okay. Is everybody good with that?
Should be canceled.
Okay. Eleven.
Did we actually make a motion on that?
Uh, we did. Or I did. I did to eleven, two thirty.
To noon?
Yes, well.
Okay.
Noon.
Do we need a motion?
Well, start at noon.
Starting at noon, okay.
The twenty-second at noon.
Okay. And was there a second?
I'll support it.
Okay.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Eleven H, budget amendment.
All right, this goes back to our Grellikville Water Systems Special Assessment District. We just, we need to increase the operating transfers out of the general fund by sixty-four thousand three hundred dollars. And that, and then for next year, we can make arrangements and set up how we want to start paying the general fund back from the Grellikville Operating Fund. The bond council said that we were able to do that. So we'll come up with the schedule. But in order to not show a law or a deficit in our audit for next year, we'll need to do this.
That makes sense.
Because that would affect our
Yeah. Yeah. We were, I mean, there was the option, we could try to do that now, Grellikville Operating, but it's probably better to wait until next year and look at it a little more closely and just come up with a with a schedule. And as I said in the memo, I think that they're working on the water rate study and that can be incorporated into it.
I move we adapt resolution twenty of twenty twenty-two, the budget amendment resolution.
Support.
Motion and support. Discussion? Roll call, vote, please, Connie.
I'll vote yes. Dave Darga?
Yes.
Jim O'Rourke?
Yes.
Terry Lautner?
Yes.
Chris McCoskey?
Yes.
Jeff Shaw?
Yes. Thank you. Resignation letter.
Will that be like on the January or February agenda then, talking about that? Or when, when you propose?
Yeah, we'll talk to John DeVosa and yeah, the study won't be done by then, but
Oh, okay.
That's moving very slowly, so.
Yes, it is.
But we can at least see, I know I read at least one, I think, major item for the Grellikville Water System Improvement in the DPW's budget. So we'll have to take a look at that and go from there.
Okay.
It, it took them a year and a half to do the water rate study on East Bay. So they're working on Garfield right now and they're supposed to move to us sooner than later, I hope. So.
They should be getting better at it.
Yeah, they should.
We know somebody who can
Yeah.
maybe help with that.
Yes, we do.
Did you mention that in your supervisor's?
I didn't. I actually thought about that, but I'll mention it at the extended public comment.
Okay.
So. That's all our new business. Twelve, payment of invoices.
We need a
No.
I thought that was
Oh, I'm sorry. I said it and then we moved on, so.
Eleven I.
Sorry about that. Resignation letter.
Thanks, guys. This is addressed to the board since we hire and fire and allow people to move on to other things. I cannot hold two offices at once and this is probably the greatest township in the world, the best people to work with. We've done so much. When I started some forty-plus years ago, we were in the fire barn down by the recycle station. We had one office, two fire trucks. A fire chief that said, there will never be an ambulance in my barn. Okay, and Nancy Scott was our secretary. We did not own the property that we had here. We didn't have all the recreational things. We've got a great township, the greatest place to live. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna miss you guys. I won't show up on the podium, but, you know, two you guys. I won't show up in the podium, but, you know, two years might go pretty fast. I may be back. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
So we need a motion?
I'll make the motion to accept the resignation of trustee Jim O'Rourke, effective December thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
Support.
We have a motion to support. Other discussion?
I, I just want to say it's been a real pleasure serving with Jim. Jim was, I think, an outstanding sheriff's deputy. He, he, put him on a case and he'd solve it. And put him on projects. He gets things done. And it's just been a pleasure working with him. He was a neighbor of mine for many years, and he's still a neighbor. This township is, everybody's a neighbor. But it's been a pleasure working with Jim here in the town board, and I wish him well at the county commission.
Yeah, we're looking forward to having you. You know, we're going to miss you like crazy, but it'll be nice having somebody with some common sense and, and whipping those people into shape up there, right, Eric?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, see?
Well, I'd still like to be in the, you know, to help the township out in, whichever way I can, okay, so.
We appreciate that.
Something comes open or whatever.
At least come and have coffee on Tuesdays.
That's right.
Maybe Thursdays.
Thank you, sir.
Big step.
Do they pay more, Jim, up there, or what's the deal?
Oh, yeah, yeah, they pay a lot. I think, was it seventy-three or eighty meetings they had last year? Eric, was it?
You hit per day.
Eight, yeah, forty, forty bucks a meeting, I think, and the last one was six hours, I think. I see forty divided by six, you know?
What a friggin' nightmare.
The agenda was this long, and it was like, you know? I think Chris summed it up. Will we leave that statement?
Yes, she did.
All right, move on.
All right.
Guys are making me blush. Come on.
All righty. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? You're out of here. All righty, sorry about that. Payment of invoices, number twelve.
Paid the invoices in the amount of fifty-nine thousand five hundred ninety-two dollars and twenty-four cents.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you. It is six thirty-two, and I would like to open extended public comment. Anyone in the public that would like to make any comment at this point?
I do. I'd just like to thank Jim on behalf of the community for his service as trustee.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Joe and I worked together many years while he was probate court registered up there when I, for Judge Weaver even.
Any other public comment? So what Connie made reference to is our marina and financial consultant was in last week for a couple of days, and we spent a lot of time with him. I spent a lot of time with him. We walked around down with the marina, and he spent a lot of time with Chris, and he spent a lot of time with Connie, and he is unbelievable. So he's going to have, he now knows more about our township, the marina, but the entire township financially than any of us have any idea. So the guy is, the guy's unbelievable. So he'll have a lot of really good information for us. He has a lot of thoughts on the best way for us to proceed. He went onto the DNR website and found a report that none of us even knew existed that predicts how much we're going to need to do improvements in our marina between now and twenty, whatever. And the guy had it all laid out, and he had everything highlighted, and wherever there was something that wasn't consistent, he had it highlighted and sent emails to all of us wanting to know why this was that way. We're all going, wow. So, so it'll be, he's, at the end of this, he's going to come and give us a presentation.
Good.
So.
Yeah.
Give us what?
A presentation as to what he thinks is best for us. So.
Apply for, apply for grants.
Yeah, he's all about that.
Continue.
But that's the beauty of having him do all this, too, is now we're going to have all this information, and it's all going to be consistent, and it's all going to be in one place. And when we do want to apply for a grant or something, we'll have the ability to just grab that information and go with it. So, guy's great. So.
Is that enough to create a job listing or advisor for that? I mean, it sounds like he's doing a lot of work and work that normal people can't do. And.
I would say he's doing work no, normal people couldn't do, for sure.
Well, that's what I mean. If he's finding stuff that we haven't found in years, I.
Right. Well, honestly, one of the things that I, that I, you know, I put a list of things together that I thought we were looking for from him, and, and the last item I said was, you know, not just specifically the marina, but as the marina relates to the township, how's the township as a whole? What's the financial health look like? And, and he already did that. I mean, he's already, he was already in the process of doing that, because he was like, you know, I can't just look at the marina without looking at the whole thing, and it goes back to the individual kingdoms, Dave.
Right.
You know, so, so he, he said, you know, I, so he was already putting that stuff together before I even asked him. So, guy is amazing. So to answer your question, probably, I don't, you know, I, he, he's a retired guy, and he joked about, you know, it was either a greeter at Walmart or doing something that he really was interested in. And, you know, he's, he's used to working, and forgive me, sir, if I get any of this wrong, but he's used to working with a lot bigger numbers. You know, he worked for GM, and, and whenever they were going to buy or sell a business, it was him that went in, crunched all the numbers and figured all that out. So billions of dollars. So, so this is kind of a, I don't want to say it's an easy thing, but it's certainly a lot less complicated than, than some of the other projects he worked on. So I don't think we could afford to pay somebody to do that. He, he's doing this because he's retired, he's interested, and he wants to participate. I, I mean, as long as you brought it up, I think.
There ought to be some compensation if he's got all these.
Well, we're going to, we need to compensate him. And I, you know, I, he and I have talked a little bit about it, and, and as we progress through this, we'll have more information. But, but I, I think we need to pay him. We certainly can't pay him what he's worth, and I already told him that. But, but I, but I think we need to pay him. I don't want to insult the guy. I mean, he's done, he's probably, I, I don't know how many hours he's put in. Hundreds already, probably, you know? So, anyway, I just wanted to give you an update on that. The guy's amazing, and, and he's going to have some great information for us.
Boy, it's great when he walks to the door like that.